All right, I'd like to call this joint meeting between the Stoughton Area School District Board of Education and the Stoughton Committee of the whole to order. Should we take roll?
You can, if you'd like, or we should at least.
Yeah, yeah.
We should too.
Yes.
Okay. I'll call the roll for the school district, for the Board of Education. Mr. Booban.
Here.
Ms. Fitzgibbon.
Here.
Mr. Frye.
Here.
Ms. Tarpinian.
Here.
Mr. Coughlin.
Here.
And Scott Dirks is here. Excused from the school board are Ms. Robb, Ms. Sorg, and Mr. Jackson.
Borsma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Swadley.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Engelberger.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Trul is absent and excused. Mieski is absent and excused. Hirsch is absent and excused. Kittelston is absent and excused. O'Connor.
Here.
All right. Excuse me. It probably wouldn't hurt, although we've done this once before, I think we've got a couple of new people on the school board since our last meeting, so if we could maybe just go around the table and introduce ourselves to each other. Start with you.
Hi, I'm all, I think I know all of you. I'm Tim Swadley. I'm the current city council president in older district number one.
Mike Engelberger, district two, vice president of the council.
Sid Borsma, I'm district one.
Kathleen Taft-Johnson, district two.
Tim Booban, newly elected to the school board.
Newly drafted, given, school board member.
Joe Frye, school board member.
Donna Tarpinian, school board member.
Pat O'Connor, district four.
Greg Johnson, district three.
John Coughlin, new school board member.
Matt Bartlett, district four.
Lisa Reeves, district two.
Tim Onsager, superintendent of schools.
Good evening, Donna Olson, mayor for the city of Stoughton.
And I'm Scott Dirks. I'm the president of the Stoughton Board of Education. Next up on the agenda is a review of the city comprehensive plan. I know that information regarding that went out through the electronic postings to everybody. Just before the meeting, I spoke with Mr. Swadley, and he told me that there were a couple of, I guess, corrections or amendments that maybe need to be pointed out.
Sure. Thanks, Scott. We did get some feedback from the school district that there are a few items that we need to correct in the comprehensive plan relating to the configurations of the schools, so we will work to get that corrected. And we also just wanted to bring it, the attention to the school board members, that there were various points in the plan that referred to the school district, and that we had one amendment that was specifically addressed what the council would like to do in order to help support the school enrollment situation. And that amendment is in there, it's on the board right now. That amendment was moved by Vice President Engelberger, and I don't know if you want to share your thoughts about that, or otherwise it's pretty much self-explanatory.
Self-explanatory.
Basically, it just says that we feel it's important that we work together with the school district to address some of the issues that are challenging for both of us, and that we would also work to implement some policies related to that. So, the rest of the information is just kind of in there for the school board and for the council members and the community to know that we did take the school district into consideration as we were drafting our comprehensive plan, which we do every 10 years by state law.
If I could, I would add that the comprehensive plan only pertains to the city of Stoughton, so you guys have territory outside in the townships, and I would also encourage the townships to get together with you guys and do a similar, you know, similar thing that we're trying to do here, work together to try to solve the problems.
Right. Mr. Borsma.
And there is some language in the comprehensive plan talking about working with the townships as well. So that was an amendment that I was going to introduce as well, but when I re-looked at the plan, it looked like it was adequately covered by the comprehensive plan as presented.
Did anybody have any questions or comments regarding that? Mr. Frye.
Yeah, what form is the working together going to take? What's that going to look like over the next two years?
Well, actually, if you look a little bit further down at item number eight regarding the formation of an ad hoc committee, I think that's probably where we would discuss that. If you want to hold off on that until we get to that point, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I just didn't know if that's what the council had in mind when they wrote the amendment, or what they were thinking when they said work together.
I think that's certainly something that we'd hope for, but obviously, you know, it's a partnership, and we need to have that conversation with our potential partners, which we're hoping we can do that tonight.
Okay, Mr. Borsma.
There was some discussion at the council when we were talking about this amendment, about whether or not we should, before passing it in full, contacting the school to, you know, not to get permission, but get language, or whatever. But it was thought by, I think, pretty much all of us, that the amendment sort of took care of itself in the way it was written, and it didn't obligate the Stoughton schools to be on board as we, but we did have discussion of the fact that we were going to be meeting as a, as a, as two units, and that it was, it was pretty imperative that we work directly with each other based on what we had hoped would happen, which includes our last meeting and also tonight's meeting.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Another issue that, as I understand it, both the city council and the district wanted to discuss was city population growth, with discussion on current and future development of single-family housing, which I think is closely related to this. I don't know if there was anything specifically that anybody wanted to talk about in that regard. Go ahead, please.
Sure, thank you. So, what we included in the packet was some information that comes from our director of planning and development, Rodney Sheal, and his department. And this is information that kind of gives you a summary of where we're at in our current developments. You'll also see in there, there's commercial and residential permits that have been issued this year, and, you know, some other data. And this information is available to the school district. If you find that this or any other information we may have would be helpful to you, we're certainly more than happy to share that.
Yeah, I, I think that we probably would appreciate it if you could just send it out to the district office as an email, and then we can distribute, if that's, if that works for you all.
I, I think it will, and I think the idea here is for us to share information and collectively, you know, try to take that information and put together some sort of an action plan in order to address the issue. And if you guys are in the loop on what we're doing, and we're in the loop on what you're doing, hopefully together, you know, we can, we can make good decisions. Since the packet was put together, we did have a joint meeting on Tuesday night with the redevelopment authority, and they're currently working on the Milfab area plan. And basically, what we learned that night was we, the developer that we had anticipated would be leading that project has decided that now, the timing's not good for him to do that at this point. And so, we're currently going to be discussing what our options would be. So that would affect the, the number of potential properties that may get started there. We'll more than likely have a discussion about that at our council meeting next week. And we also had presentations from the architect that was there, and he gave a summary of the charrettes. And I'm not sure if any of the school board members participated in that, but if you did, there's a nice summary. That information is also available, if you're interested in, in what the community felt we should do down there. And then there's also the proposal from that developer, which was Tannisay, and some other documents on the newly revamped redevelopment authority, also known as the RDA, on their website, which is a link to the city's website, for your reading pleasure. We also had a presentation that evening from Moving Out, which is the developers and property managers for the Elwoodstead properties, and they're looking to do another project in Stoughton. So we had a presentation with them, and we anticipate we'll have future conversations with them. Today, the council members just received their market study that they did as part of their, you know, their preparation for this development. They've received some grant money from the county, they're, they're anticipating some more. So we're still in conversation with them as far as developing up to, I believe it was 59 units in that area. So, what we're trying to do is just share that information with the school district, so if these things start to come together, you can plan accordingly. And if you want to be involved with that process, or provide us input in our decision-making process, as well as the community, we certainly would welcome your feedback.
Questions on any of that?
Tim, I had a quick question.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Have we ever considered, and maybe this is more so for the joint efforts, et cetera, I know there's some companies that will do an analysis of neighborhoods, of, you know, as neighborhoods age, there, there's some progression, or there's some way to anticipate turnover in neighborhoods. So as, as neighborhoods age, and say that the families get older, and the kids grow up, and they move out, that it turns over, that they sell the homes, and the neighborhood becomes younger again, so to speak, with younger families. And I know there's some companies out there that will do a study and analyze neighborhoods for us, to give us an idea. Have we ever thought about doing anything like that, even jointly?
As far as I've know, we've never had that conversation, as far as who that would be.
Yep.
So if you had that information, we would certainly welcome it. I can tell you that one of the community members brought up to us that, in other communities that have used the UW Population Lab, which you use for your enrollment, that they've done some studies with them to project out, based on single-family homes, duplexes, apartments, how many students they could anticipate, they have a formula.
Yep.
Now, I don't know if that formula is universal. I'm guessing it might change by community, but that's an idea that you may be able to use as you're working with them on your enrollment. If there's other services that they could provide that we could share, I think that would be great as well.
Yeah, that actually is one of the components of their population projections, is housing starts and so forth. I had a question, going back to what you were saying, Mr. Swadley, Moving Out, do they have a site picked out for the, these units, or?
They do. Currently, they're, they have 30-some units down by Eighth Street, which most people are familiar with. And what they were hoping to do, there's a, a green metal building in that neighborhood that's owned by Stoughton Trailers, and their hopes would be that the city would purchase that building, and make that site ready for them, for their next phase of what they want to do. We haven't made any decisions regarding that at this point. We had a presentation the other night, it was very informative. I believe that meeting was taped by WSTO, so if school board members wanted to go on their website, they could certainly watch that and the other presentations as well, to get the specific information. But we, we, as a council, have not really given any direction to the redevelopment authority on what we're willing, or what we want them to do regarding that development.
But that would be within that redevelopment area.
Yes.
Okay.
And if, if the mayor or the planning director have anything they want to add, or correct, or anything, please feel free to jump in here, because, you know, you guys are dealing with this stuff on a daily basis.
Maybe I won't speak specifically to the Moving Out project, but I think it might be worth just highlighting a couple of development projects that are ongoing, just to give people
a little more than just what's written there.
The Nordic Ridge development was mentioned last time. That's the extension of Hole Avenue. You'll recognize there's, well, actually, the description indicates Phase One. We've had 17 single-family starts in that development already, and there's 23 available lots to build on right now. But if you've, if you've been able to drive down into that area, Phase Two is under construction right now. And so that'll bring online approximately 30 more additional, primarily single-family homes. I think there's a couple of duplex lots, but primarily single-family parcels. Kind of the, the elephant in the room is the Kettle Park West discussion. Phase Two, Phase Two A that was approved allows for the senior, senior housing project, as well as the True by Hilton Hotel facility, that would be located behind the, the new Aldi's that is, is currently under construction at Jackson and 51. Phase Two, that is more of the residential component, is still on the table, being discussed. There's access issues that are trying to be worked out, as, as you've all read in the hub, there's, there's issues that the council's trying to work through with the developer, related to access of Oak Opening Drive to State Highway 138. Certainly, there's a number of multifamily and single-family homes that are, are anticipated as part of Phase Two, Phase Three of Kettle Park West, as, if and when that proceeds. So those are the things that are right now in the hopper. Obviously, Nordic Ridge is the most predominant. The riverfront redevelopment area has been mentioned. Certainly, there is a, a great deal of discussion that yet needs to occur there, related to the amount and type of homes and/or units that would be constructed in that area. At the draft level stage, they were talking in the neighborhood of about 260 units in that approximately 13-acre area. So, that's still up for discussion, and we're optimistic that things will move forward on the riverfront redevelopment area. There is a period of time that we have to expend TIF dollars within, so we can recapture dollars related to the investments that the city has made already, and will likely still have to make, to make that area ready for redevelopment. So time is, is somewhat of the essence, to make sure that we can all realize the economic benefit of the improvements that would occur there, and not to mention the additional residential units that would become part of the community as well. And answer any questions, if anybody had any questions, too.
Rodney, do we, is there any data, or did we see anything about how many people may have come through that Nordic Ridge as a result of the parade of homes?
Yeah, I, I think there was, I'm going from memory, I think there was 3,600 visitors to the parade of homes in the Stoughton facility itself. Quite encouraging numbers.
Yeah.
Certainly, there's, there's local people that attend that, but it certainly brought new eyes to the community that hadn't been here before as well. Good question.
Could I just add, just from the meeting the other night, we were, they did a presentation from Moving Out about, we had issues of poverty, and they did some analysis. One of the surprising things to me, and people can correct me if I'm wrong about this, but that poverty, folks in poverty are fairly spread out through the city, and it may, may, some folks may have thought it would be different, but I, there, and they did it by an analysis of children in poverty, and said that, I think the, the percentage of kids in poverty in each one of the schools was about 40% in a poverty, in a poverty level, which was surprising to me, in their analysis of it, because I thought that it, it might be that kids were more in one school than another, but I was fairly surprised with that, that analysis they did. Whether it's totally accurate, I don't know, and, but I, I raise it because it, you know, it's been an issue of discussion as, on different levels in, in some of the elementary schools. So, that was just one of the surprising things that came out of that study from Moving Out.
Do you want to comment on that at all?
And I don't have, I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, and when we, we have to also be cognizant of, there's multiple different definitions that people use. And so some are the percentage of the students that we know of that qualify for free and reduced lunch, and there could be more students whose families haven't filled out the paperwork, et cetera. We find that our numbers, which is based a lot on free and reduced lunch percentages, et cetera, find that we have a higher concentration of people who qualify at Kaganza. But they aren't that much skewed that it's 10 percentage points, you know, more than everybody else. We find that Kaganza and Fox are very similar, with Kaganza being the highest in the district for percentage-wise. Sandhill is the third, if you rank them. Middle school is about the same as Sandhill, and our numbers dramatically decrease at high school. Now, that could be several reasons. That could be, we're seeing more families with younger kids who are economically disadvantaged, or it could mean that families, when the students get to high school, just aren't continuing with the paperwork, or aren't asking for that assistance, or, or maybe they don't know. The district and staff, and Jenny McKenna at the district office in particular, has done a fabulous job of working with families and trying to help identify families and help them get the support that they need. But we find they are, we find that Kaganza has the highest in the district, but it's not, it's maybe four or five percentage points above Fox. So they are similar, but we find that Kaganza has a little more higher concentration, at least that attendance area, and so, which could be spread out across the city, but we also take into account, our attendance areas include outlying areas as well, so.
Yeah, I'm just repeating what, what I had heard at the meeting.
Mr. Engelberger.
Thank you, Scott. I just, you know, we, we got that report the other night, and we just had that email to us today, I think it's called Eighth Street Apartments, I think is the name of the report, that they based the report on. And some of the information I heard the other night was conflicting with what I've heard in the past. So I'd really like you guys, I don't know if you guys have seen this report, at the school district.
No, I don't believe we got it.
I'd really like you guys to see that report, and take a look at it, and verify if, if it's correct, or, we'd like to have accurate information.
We'd be happy to.
The other thing, I just wanted to ask Rodney, can you comment, Rodney, on, do we know anything about what's going to happen on the northwest corner of N and B, up there with that development? Is there anything in sight on that thing, or no?
The northwest corner of N and B, it's within the city limits now, near the county garage, for the former county garage, for folks that are trying to recognize.
Yeah, what's proposed there, or?
Yeah, there has been development discussion about that area being developed, and all of us can recognize that it's not close to services. So sanitary sewer water, a number of pieces of infrastructure make it challenging to anticipate that to be in the short term. The developer, at one point, was very anxious to see that move forward. However, there's a fair amount of capital that's going to be necessary in order to make that be developed to city standards, that may prevent that from being a short-term development proposal.
Any, any projections on what they were looking at, as far as number of stuff in that area?
Well, truthfully, their focus was actually more, in that area being a, more of a senior housing area. Retire, more of a retirement community, not necessarily that that's where it will be now, but that was a great deal, the discussion was looking at it being more of a, a higher-age location. That's not to say there aren't other areas in the city that are ripe for development that may materialize. As you know, the, the north end of Page Street, there's, there is, or there was recently some single-family homes constructed there. There is an area just between Page Street and the railroad tracks at the north end that that current landowner is anxious to try to develop. There's a number of hurdles and approvals that he has to go through, but he was still showing interest in trying to develop that principally as single-family homes. So, on the table, that's one of the three that are probably the most ripe for development.
Other questions? Ms. Tarpinian.
I just wanted to go back to a couple of things, the poverty numbers, the free and reduced lunch. I just, I know that Sandhill is third in the ranking, but as I understand it, just because Sandhill has more children in it than other schools, the number of children really is pretty stable amongst all the schools. So looking at it by percentage is sometimes, you know, it's tricky. I think you just have to be, be considerate of that. The other thing, I just wanted to take a step back, when we were talking about the townships, because I'm actually a resident of the town of Dunn, and I'm wondering if it would be wise to have either Scott and Tim write a joint letter to the, to the different townships, or Mayor Donna and Tim Onsager, as, you know, the school district and city mayor, I don't know which would be appropriate, but just writing a letter, talking about our collaboration here, and encouraging the same with the townships. I know a lot of the township meetings fall on the same nights as school boards meetings, but at least trying to start some dialogue, and just saying, we're doing this, if there's some way that we can get information, or at least share information, at least we could open up the door to that.
No, I think that's an excellent idea. That's a very good point. We'll, we'll talk about that.
Sure. Thanks, Rodney.
Ms. Fitzgibbon.
Oh, I was actually, for.
Rodney's, oh, you're not done yet.
I have a question for you.
Can I ask you to speak into the, I need you to speak into the mic. It'll be on TV, so we'll have to, there we go. Love to share, thanks.
So, when you were talking about the Phase Two of KPW.
Yes.
And you were mentioning that still some issues that do not allow for moving forward. What specifically are those issues?
Yeah, the primary one, the council is, is very concerned about access to State Highway 138. The developer believes there might be ways to phase, phase construction to reduce the concerns related to that. But ultimately, the council has put a, put a position in place that says, until the developer has obtained DOT approval for Oak Opening connection to State Highway 138, Phase Two discussions really aren't continuing until that occurs.
And there is no idea of when that would happen?
Well, it's, it's, it's a challenging issue. Number of factors play, and I'm not going to try to rehash them all, but certainly I'm open to questions related to it. The development can accommodate the traffic, based on the traffic impact analysis, with Jackson Street being improved. A secondary access would be also to the north, that leads up through, near Stoughton Lumber, that's known as Deer Point Drive, and Oak Opening comes into that area as well. So that would allow for two access points in the Phase Two. The third access point that's being considered is the access point, which the city believes is an important one, the connection to State Highway 138. The traffic impact analysis indicates that, based on just traffic alone, we could safely serve Phase Two without that connection to State Highway 138. So they're, they're struggling with that, and the DOT is, they have access restrictions on State Highway 138. And so the consolidation of access points on that stretch of highway is very sensitive and very challenging. I think they believe they're making some inroads into options to make that happen, and hopefully something will, will emerge that would allow that to be seriously considered, to allow Phase Two to move forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Swadley?
Thank you. Just to follow up on that, I received a draft agenda for the council meeting next week, and one of the items that's on the draft agenda is to have that discussion with the developers. So, as of right now, we would continue or begin those discussions again next week, unless something between now and then changes. So we might be able to communicate an update after that meeting. I don't know if you have anything to add.
Ironically, something has changed, and they're not ready to come before the council into that first meeting in, in August. So, it's a fluid, always fluid and moving, right?
But we're getting closer, though.
Not yet, not yet, yep.
Okay, so we'll keep you updated on when that actually does occur, so.
That'd be great, thank you. Other questions regarding item four, city population growth? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Number five, marketing the Stoughton area community. I know that- I know that certainly at the school board, this is something that we've talked about at our strategic planning update back in April, that was something that was talked about a great deal by the participants. We had, I don't know, over a hundred, I believe, were there. So I don't know if anybody had anything they specifically wanted to talk about with that. I know Mr. Coughlin, you sent me an email along those lines. Is there anything that you wanted to present here tonight?
Sure, I'd at least just like to bring it into discussion and see what people's ideas are. For those of you who don't know me, I'm John Coughlin. My wife and I moved here three years ago, and so this is my first year on the, on the school board, my first term. And my wife and I are both thirty and about to have our first kid, so we, I think, qualify as a young family. And since I've started getting, I don't know, involved in local Stoughton politics and community discussions, I've noticed sort of a lack of those voices, and, or a lack of voices in the, in the young family age range, and then also, together with that, we see sort of declining enrollment numbers in our school district, and we see a sort of stagnation in our population growth, and I, I mean, I feel like the community has, is coming close to a consensus that all of those things might be kind of related together. So I personally have a really strong interest in finding a way to attract and retain more young families to Stoughton. So I was wondering if, since I'm not quite familiar with how, like, a joint body of the city council and the school board could put together like a really concerted effort towards attracting and retaining those young families, I'm wondering if all of us here could start at least thinking about ways for us to make, I guess, proactive and concrete direction towards showing our community and those outside of it, that we are interested in bringing in more young families. Because I'm sure, I could let Tim Onsager talk about the, just the wild shift in enrollment numbers that we have just this past year with graduating, I think, like, two-hundred-eighty kids, and taking in two-hundred to our kindergarten class. And with those trends continuing, our schools will just continue to shrink, and, I mean, we're talking about all this stuff right now, so I'm, I know that this is a shock, but, yeah, I was, I was wondering what sort of a body we might be able sometime soon in the future to put together to target bringing in young families specifically, unless just population growth in the abstract.
Anybody else on that? Mr. Borzma?
Yeah, I'm a realtor in town, and I think it boils down to good jobs, good housing, and then good marketing of the community through our great amenities. I think it's a three-pronged thing, and I think the city council struggles with that fairly constantly, but just as a realtor, you know, in terms of listings, we don't have enough listings, and we don't have enough places to sell at this point. It's just a crazy market for realty right now. We don't have enough housing, that's for sure. And we don't, I don't think we, I don't think we focus as much as we could on marketing of the community. I think we, we hope that it's self-marketing with the opera house, and what it's like that, tonight we had the gazebo music, and, you know, that kind of thing, but I think, I think the word needs to get out there about Stoughton. I think some people consider it to be kind of an older community, and that's where they may settle, because they're older. But there also needs to be opening up of housing, both new housing and also housing that is going to replace other housing. Somebody moves in, somebody's older, they move into a condo, and they can sell their house, that opens the possibility of, of housing for, for the, for a younger crew. There are some houses like that available, but really, we are deficient in the, in both new housing and also older housing. And housing right now, I can tell you, when, if it's a decent-priced house, they are now on the market for four or five days, and they're getting multiple offers. So if that's happening consistently, which I think it is as a realtor, we're lagging. You know, we should, and I think that's happening throughout Dane County, but I, we need more housing, we need more, we need, we need to focus on, on, you know, advertising that we've got jobs, and then we need a really great marketing plan for Stoughton. I think, I was on, I was looking at television the other day, and I saw one, one of the communities that, I think it was Prairie de Chene, has this marketing that they're now doing for Prairie de Chene, really effective marketing, and I'm not sure that we're doing enough of that for Stoughton. I've struggled with that for years, but right now, just in the fact that we don't have enough places to sell, it accentuates the problems. I mean, who, who can move into a community if we don't have enough housing? I mean, and it's got to be decent housing for young, young families. It's just got to be that way, and we don't have enough.
Ms. Turpinian?
I'm not sure when we had this discussion at the board level, but, Tim, you had mentioned that at some, at one point, there was some talk about doing a joint marketing plan with business, like the Chamber and the district and the city. Is that, I don't know if I'm remembering this correctly, but I wonder what happened to that idea?
We've had talks on and off, throughout the last couple of years, but we, nothing has been formalized, and nothing has kind of come to fruition on it. I do believe we need a concerted effort. I think we need a concerted effort amongst the different entities, amongst the school district, amongst the city, amongst the Chamber, to, you know, as, as John and Sid both have said, to kind of market what we have to offer. We're in a great, we're in a great place, you know? You come to Stoughton, and you have this small-town feel, but you're a half-hour to Janesville, you're a half-hour to east side of Madison, west side of Madison, so small-town feel with big-city amenities close by. I think we have to do a better job, and we have to work together, of selling what the differences we have, let's say, with Oregon, okay? We have a hospital, Oregon does not. We have restaurants that people can go to, Oregon does not. We have two grocery stores, if you count Walmart, Stoughton, Oregon has one. I think we have to make sure we sell ourselves to the surrounding areas about what there is to offer. I think we are losing, you know, and somewhat it's housing and finding housing, but I think we're losing families in the perception to Oregon, and I think they get there, and I think they, they realize, and John and I had this conversation the other day, they realized how much more Stoughton has to offer than some of our surrounding areas, but it's too late, they've already bought their house. So I think we need a concerted effort to work together, and, you know, whether that's we jointly, and, you know, whether that's that, you know, ad hoc committee, and we work on that, I do believe we may want to get, you know, the different entities, that we each chip in some financial resources to bring somebody in to help us. You know, I know as a district, that's not our expertise. We're trying, and we've made some great gains, but that's not our expertise of saying, what do you market, what are people looking for, what, what are the vehicles, and what are the outlets you should market in? So, you know, one of the things that I would be interested in, and I believe that the district is interested as a whole, is how do we do that, and do we combine some financial resources to bring somebody in to help us shape that marketing plan?
I was just going to add to exactly what Dr. Onsager is saying, and when Erica Dial was with the Chamber, we had worked real hard collectively, and had made some concerted steps in the right direction, and then we know that Erica and her family moved, and the Chamber is now re-establishing itself. They've had director changes over the last several years. So it's absolutely time to get the three entities back together, each playing their own role in that, and then deciding how we move forward. But I think that ad hoc committee is also going to have a role in this.
I'm also a realtor, and I was also a realtor up in the Twin Cities, and one of the things I think we do need to emphasize is actually our schools. I, I'm concerned that Stoughton doesn't have the best reputation for schools, and I think we need to emphasize the qualities that we do have. I have family that live in Middleton, and our educators in Middleton, and also a school psychologist that was in Madison, and, you know, went through all the schools. And when you have young families, they look at the quality of the schools when they're bringing their kids. And I even lost a few neighbors, I lost my next-door neighbors, because they didn't want to send their kids to Kaganza, they wanted to be in another area. So, you know, I'm not trying to say all negative, but I, I mean, in the housing market, I've, I know I lost a couple people out of my district, because they didn't want a certain area, whether it's true or not, I think we need to get what people are saying, and, and advertise more of a positive enthusiasm on our schools out there, to break some of these gossip, or, or whatever it is, sorry. So I want your guys' thoughts as far as the school district, what you guys have heard and stuff, so.
Ms. Fitzgibbon?
Just a comment, I was just thinking, when I was moving to Stoughton a long time ago, actually, one of the reasons why I moved to Stoughton was because of the school, and the school, I think it still has a great reputation. There might be some problems, but it's still, I think we have great schools, and that we can, absolutely, we have to market that. But one thing that also I was remembering is when Epic moved to Verona, of course, we don't have an Epic, but we have many other jobs that we can provide, and I remember those billboards saying, live here, work here. I mean, it was, to me, it was very, it caused an impact, and now you go to Dutchville, and you can see how Verona have grown. So, I don't know, I'm just thinking that we should be doing things kind of like that, and also, specifically with the school, we need to probably market it as, or think of the private school probably, I don't know how we're going to get the money, but I think we, joint efforts, we can do something like that.
So, I am glad to hear that everybody's interested in marketing, because I think that is, that's probably a major problem that we have in recruiting young families. I know two families personally who, just in the past year, were considering towns, and went to one right next to Stoughton, because they didn't realize that Stoughton did have the richness of community that, that they were looking for, and one of them in particular now expressed that maybe they would have come if they, if they had known. But I, I also think that, like, like Sid mentioned, there aren't a ton of houses, especially in the price range that young families are looking for. I know personally, we're looking for a house right now, and they sort of pop up for a couple of days, and then they're gone, and then our list is pretty much empty again. So it is really hard, hard to find those, find those properties, and we're all talking about growth, and we had a short session about development, but I think there is, there is probably a lot that we can do to convince our own community, the community that lives here right now, how much healthier we would be if we, if we could find a way to make some housing available for, for these young families. And I, I think that if we, I think that marketing has to be a, has to be a component of this, in attracting some of these families here, but I think we also have to go out of our way as a community to go and find young families who already live here, ask them what types of things that they, they like about Stoughton, what types of things they, they want to see more of, and maybe highlight some of the things that we've, we've just found out with our comprehensive plan. But, but also finding a way to have some sort of body that can communicate to the school district, can communicate, or communicate to the city council, and do so in, in sort of a public manner, what types of things are going to be necessary for us to be able to bring young families in. Because marketing to people outside is, is going to be excellent, and then if they want to move here and don't have places to move, it's, it's going to be really hard, and I think we have to get our community on board to, to understand that we, we probably need more places to fit all of these people.
I guess I'd like to add to the discussion by saying that I think certainly to have this be at least one of the issues that an ad hoc combined committee between the school board and the city council, I think that's an excellent idea. But I also think, to echo what Dr. Onsager said, I think we need to pony up some money to hire professional help to steer this. I think the committee is an excellent idea, if for no other reason than, like you were saying, Mr. Coughlin, to use it as a communication tool. But I think it would be money very, very well-spent to bring in a pro to help that committee, and the Chamber, and the school board, and the city council, develop a plan for how we're going to do that. I'm sure there are tons of them out there. I don't know what cost would be like, I think that that's something that I would at least like to see these two bodies explore. We could certainly reach out to the Chamber and see what their thinking is as well. But I, yeah, I agree. Stoughton's a great community for a lot of different reasons, and I don't think that we're doing a very good job communicating to the outside world just why it is. So other questions or comments on that issue, item number five? Sure.
Sid and I were talking, and I know I talked to a couple of the older people. I personally would love to see that river development, smaller cottage homes, two-to-three bedroom, make it unique, energy-efficient homes, that the young people are more enthusiastic of living a minimalist-type life, and not getting the mansions, and they can afford them, rather than just doing apartments and condos. So that's.
Okay. Anybody else on that? Sure.
Yeah, I'm relatively new, like John, I moved to the city about three and a half years ago. I have two young daughters, my oldest is five, just about to go into kindergarten at Fox Prairie, so just moving into the school system, so I'm definitely have a, we all have a big interest in the schools, so I'm big on that. And along with this marketing, I know the council has been kicking around, an economic development person, which I'd like to see a push for, again, we've kind of discussed, finding the funding is always an issue, but I think that would be a good part for marketing the city, is marketing our schools as part of bringing in businesses as well, so I think that would be a good, good fit, if we can get that position out there. I know right now Tammy and the mayor do a good job of it, and some of the city staff, but they have a lot of other areas of focus also, so they can't always concentrate on that. So I'd like to see a professional come in on that role as an economic development director. I think we should continue pursuing that as a council, I'd like to see that happen.
Mr. Swadler?
Thank you. Well, I'll put it out there, since you mentioned it, we actually have it on the draft agenda for the council meeting next week. I asked that, that be put on the agenda, because what's happened in the past, we've been talking about an economic development-type position for the city, well, since before I got on council, and that's been six years now, I was with the school district, and, but we always had that conversation during the budget process. So the idea for next week is to try to have that conversation before the budget process, and, you know, get some ideas out there, and see if we can't start moving in that direction. Obviously, we have limitations, just as the school district does when it comes to budgeting. That's a big challenge for us. Our budgeting is based on our construction. Certainly having, you know, a dedicated economic development professional working in the city and with the school district could pay for itself, if, you know, if the economy continues the way it's going, and we have some success. And as I looked at the open enrollment numbers that the school district provided, which is the next agenda item, you know, the things that were obvious to me is, many people are open-enrolling their students to other schools, because it's more convenient for them to drop off their, their kids on the way to work, or the daycares on the way to work, and the same thing with the students coming into the school district. It's a lot about convenience. It's a lot about convenience. So, what we really need is we need to have jobs in our community that provide living wages so the young families that come here can work in Stoughton because then their work and their daycare are closer to their schools. So, I think those are the areas that, together with the school district, I'm hoping we can, you know, continue those conversations.
Mr. Borzma?
I was so struck with how, how the school has also developed with just really wonderful, excellent outreach to all kinds of places. And that is, I'm thinking about two things, one, the Stoughton dancers, I mean, that is an incredible group, and then the Madrigal singers is another one. There's a lot of really nice amenities already that, you know, I'm not sure why somebody wouldn't move to Stoughton to get their kid into the Madrigals. I mean, it's like, it's like this is, it's, we've got some great things, but I, and I hear about these, I hear about some of this stuff, you know, throughout the state kind of, but I'm not sure that I hear about them that, that is really marketing to, to even more local people, more local communities where somebody may wanna upgrade to a better home in Stoughton from another community and a better schools district in a lot of areas and so, so I'm not sure that we focused enough on, and there's more opportunities, it's all kinds of opportunities. We've got incredibly wonderful athletic program and we've got, you know, we've got, I'm not sure that we have enough appeal to people in kind of the middle range of, of income or, or the lower range of income, but we've got a lot of kids who are really actively involved in school and so I think it's, I think it's, I think this is excellent because I think it's not just the community, but it's also that we've got some really great things happening in our schools and, and frankly, I'm concerned that we're, we're not, we're not doing a good job either and not, not necessarily not a good job, not an adequate job, I think, to both, for both the city and also the school and also the hospital and the opera house and all that. I, you know, I just think we have this incredible community that we're just not getting our word out. I mean, I'm frustrated with the fact that we're, we're not getting the word out about the schools or the community itself. We've got a great community, we've got a, we've got a lake right next door, we've got, we've got a river that goes right through town, we've got, we've got now a huge development that we're, it's gonna be riverfront property that a lot of places just would die for and we just haven't gotten the word out, I think. And it's just, it's just a personal frustration for me that we just haven't gotten it out. We've got, we've got Madrigal singers second to none, I think, in, in this area of the state. We've got music that is second to none in this area of the state. We've got, we've got all these coming to town, actually, that's, that's huge. We've got three quick trips coming up, you know, we've got, we've got an incredible community and we may be lagging, lagging in marketing where we have the, we have this stuff and we, we just, we're lagging, we have it and we, we're not getting the word out that we have it.
Anybody else on that point? Yes?
The only thing I was going to add is the, when the gentleman spoke the other night about the potential new housing and when we were talking about the poverty rates and he, he talked about, one of the things he cited was the number of, the reason we need more of these housing units is because of the low wages that are paid, the average wage of the people living in Stoughton in terms of, you know, the new jobs that are being, I think it was, and I don't wanna misquote, but the jobs that were available right now in the community in terms of the job postings. So, I think, you know, one of the things you mentioned, Tim, is that the, you know, the need for jobs that attract young families and, you know, a living wage for not just young families, but particularly young families, if that's who we're wanting to attract. But I do, any of you that have been to any meetings I've been at in the last, you know, several months know that I have been hoping and wishing for an urban planner slash economic development director for some time and I think that what we really need to do and we're starting is look at the big picture because it is the schools and it is the jobs and it is the housing and it is getting community input, including young people and that sort of thing. And so, I'm really excited that we're here. I think we're, you know, it's a really great first step and I also really feel like it would be money absolutely well spent, you know, we, you turn that over in, in a very short amount of time because they make decisions and help us make decisions that, where we can drive the development that's gonna, you know, bring in people that will wanna live and work and play here because we do have the hospital and the schools and, and that sort of thing. So, I'm absolutely on board with, you know, getting the community involved and working together and I'm just really excited that I think we're heading in the right direction.
Anybody else? Mr. Engelberger?
Thank you. I just wanted to, I mean, kinda say the obvious. Lisa touched on it with our lower wages here. We have a lot of blue collar workers here, you know, factory type jobs and they, those jobs aren't paying like they used to pay years ago, they're not keeping up with the times. But the other thing, we have a lot of things here, a lot of great things in this city, but one thing we don't have is a four lane highway leading to the city. Every, every passageway out of town is a two lane highway. Oregon doesn't have that problem, Six Minutes to Madison, Sun Prairie, you know, Mount Orup, you know, they're all, they've all got four lane highways going right into their, right into Madison. We don't have that. And once we get that, and they've been talking about it for over 50 years, getting us a four lane highway down here, once we get that, then you're gonna be able to grow like we want to grow for our schools. Hopefully, we can do some things in between, but we need to push on that a little more too with the state.
Anybody else on this point? The next up is a discussion of open enrollment related issues. At our last joint meeting, we had a presentation where we at least touched on that and there were some questions that were raised by city council basically on reasons why people open enroll their kids in or out of Stoughton. And we recently had a third party conduct a survey of the families involved in that and the results of that survey should have been posted this last week. I'll just ask Dr. Onsager to walk everyone through that quickly.
In the survey and what we did was we gave school perceptions the contact information for the families who have opened enrolled out, but also opened enrolled in. And so, some families have multiple students, so the numbers in there is not the number of students, it's the number of families. And what school perceptions did is they directly called the families. So, it wasn't a paper and pencil survey, it was a, a direct contact. And they tried to do at least three times a direct contact. And so, in there, they had over 50% of the open enrolled out families respond. They had some where the information and the contact information that we had on file is no longer the accurate contact information and they had some that after three attempts did not respond. And so, so you see, we had 77 completed surveys, so that's 77 families, which means they could have multiple children. One of the, the data points that really was, I shouldn't say eye opening, but was really revealing is that 73% of the families indicated their children have never attended Stoughton Area School District. So, it's not, so 73% of the numbers, it's not like they started here and then left, they've never attended here. So, and some of that is, goes back to our previous discussion on marketing and getting the word out of what we're doing. In front of you, I brought extra copies and this was in the hub today. It will be in the, the Great Dane next week. Hopefully, you noticed a little different approach we took this year. This is a marketing tool that we're, we're trying. This talks about the great things we're doing, it talks about the options we have, it talks all about some of the, the things that we are doing using pictures, et cetera. So, I do think we need to get the word out, not only the community, but also the district and some of the things we're doing. We're, we're talking about making a concerted effort during the open enrollment season of having more videos and, and pushing out more on Facebook and things like that and how do we expand that, that reach of what we're doing, et cetera. So, those are things we're talking about. But as Tim Swadler had mentioned, if you look at the survey, the two major reasons that people listed for opening and rolling their students out was, major reasons was geographic, which, keep going, keep going. There you go, oh, back one.
Back one?
Yep. There you go. So, current school is closer to my work slash home, which is also daycare, 44% said that, that was one of the main reasons. And then 33% said other. And when you read the comments for other, a lot of those dealt with, my child started another school, they started in another school district, we moved to Stoughton and they wanted to continue in that school district or they wanted to continue in the, the school that they were in, et cetera. So, I think we have to do, again, goes to the previous point, we have to do a better job of telling them why Stoughton, why they should come to the, the district and, and what we have to offer. And, and we also need to take a hard reality at some of the other comments of, of why other reasons why people may have left and see what are the things that we can do, et cetera. But we need to, to be able to tell our story, tell the great things that we are doing, tell them the opportunities. Again, we are a small enough school district that we can personalize and we get, get to know the students, but we're large enough that we have lots of options. As Sid mentioned, you know, we have the Norwegian dancers, we have the Madrigals, but you also have a plethora of athletic and extracurricular activities. We also have advanced placement classes, we also have increased options at the middle school, we have STEM, we also have, you know, I know Kaganza was mentioned, but Kaganza is going through a redesign and, and the things that they started last year and the things that they are gonna continue to, to do, that school is on the move and, and doing some tremendous things. You have Fox, which is a very solid school and Sandhill, which is a very solid school and they're looking at other things. And we just need to get the word out in some respect with that as well of, of the different options and different things that can be. So, this, this report is hot off the press, I think I got it the week we shared it with you. So, we are in the process of taking a deep dive into it and really studying kind of the reasons and studying the feedback we got from it.
Questions? Yes, Mr. Swadler?
First of all, thank you for sharing that information with us. The other thing that I really noticed on the open enrollment is that only 13% would even consider coming back to Stoughton, which tells me exactly what you said, we need to get them when those kids are first entering school and invest our time and money at that point because if we try to do it after the fact, we're gonna have little success. And, and that's understandable. One suggestion I would make for the families that are open and rolling in, you ask them what was important to, to them as far as whether it was curriculum or teachers or, is just ask a follow-up question, are we meeting your expectations in those areas? That way, they know that not only are we thankful that we're here, but if there's something that we're missing, we wanna make sure that we can address those issues for those families. So, just a suggestion, I think the survey was great, hopefully you'll continue it.
Other questions or comments?
Just want, thank you Scott. Are we losing kids to St. Anne's and Martin Luther? Is that part of this whole, too? I mean, we've got, those are two, I gotta say, and/or charter schools, I gotta say, those are two good schools, too.
Right. We have, we have an excellent relationship with our private schools, you know, St. Anne's in particular, we work very closely with them because a lot of the students that go to St. Anne's are back in our system when they enter high school. We also have a collaborative relationship with sharing some resources with some of our special ed instructors, with sharing resources as far as math, et cetera. St. Anne's and, and the private schools are also on our network. So, we work with them on the technology and things like that. So, we have a really good relationship with them because we could take the approach of, they're, they're a competitor, we take the approach of they're eventually our students and realistically, our approach is we want every student who lives in the Stoughton Area School District to have an excellent education, whether they're going with us or they're going somewhere else, you know, we want them to thrive.
And I was thinking about that issue of when you, when you talked about the fact that the real youngsters are maybe starting off in those two particular schools, Martin Luther and, you know, so we may be, I mean, maybe, maybe they will be coming back eventually, but that's a, that's a significant shift from 258 to 200 graduating versus enrollment, that's kind of dismal, actually.
And we've seen, we've seen that decrease in our numbers for the last, our applied population studies for the last, say, 10 years or so have seen that. So, when I got here in 2010, the average graduating class was 250. Now, there are people that I talked to can remember when the average graduating class was 325. And so, it was 250 when I got here in 2010. We've been slowly reducing ever since. This year's, the senior class of 2017, so those that just graduated, was our largest class in the district, it was 284. Our average class sizes now are about 200. So, the, the eighth grade class coming into high school that's replacing them is 200. So, our high school's going down roughly, just strictly on those numbers, 84 students next year. Our district, if you look at the incoming kindergarten class is 200. So, our new norm for the last four, maybe five years has been a kindergarten class about 200. And so, we're seeing that come through the system. Now, there are, there are lots of reasons that we can, we can look at and we can study whether it's from, you know, we need to attract younger families, to lower birth rates, to availability of housing, to whatnot, but I also look at, we are one of the few school districts in Dane County that has declining enrollment. Most, all of the rest of our Dane County cohorts are at least stable, if not increasing. And so, that's something that I think is worth a dialogue and worth a, how do we, how do we, you know, kinda stop that trend, you know, level off and then maybe start to increase because that is something that is hitting the schools really hard in our funding as, you know, as Tim has said, you know, your funding increases is based on your housing and your building permits, et cetera. Our funding is solely based on, or majority of it is based on number of students that attend and we get money per pupil. And so, each student we lose through open enrollment, open enrollment's a little different, but each student that does not come here or that reduction, it's about $9,000 a student, nine to $10,000 a student and, and that's an estimate right now.
Mr. Pinion?
Just to clarify, I believe that St. Anne's, there is no Martin Luther anymore. They just have the, the 4K. St. Anne's is having reduced numbers as well. But Tim's, I mean, the funding mechanism, at least if kids are open rolling out, we still get some money per head. It's getting smaller. But it's, I don't think it's that we're losing kids to private schools is really our issue, I think it's much bigger is the declining enrollment.
Mr. Swadler?
Thank you. So, I had a question as far as the school voucher and how that's affecting our school district and kind of what can we do to help the school district with that issue? Because I know that's something that's been changing the last several years and I've tried to keep up the date on it, I've been to some meetings where there's been presentations regarding the direction that's going, but certainly you guys live and breathe that stuff every day.
We haven't, we haven't been hit incredibly hard with vouchers. I think we had two students. I think we had two students last year that fell under the voucher. So I wouldn't say that, you know, while vouchers across the state, you know, there's some concern about that as far as locally, we really haven't been hit with that. But one of the things that, you know, with vouchers is the money to pay for the voucher students across the state, and Erica, correct me if I'm wrong, that comes off the top of school funding. So they pay the voucher students and the families first, and then what's left is distributed amongst the school district. So that's a little troubling that the voucher students get paid off the top of the money allocated by the state for funding. But as far as sheer numbers of students that we've seen with vouchers, it's been two.
So basically what you're saying, if the money's being taken off the top, so if they have many vouchers in another district, the Stoughton School District is still penalized?
It, our taxpayers will pick up a, an increased amount of the burden to fund schools. So, you know, we set our annual budget based on our revenue caps, and then we look at what the allocation or what the, what percentage the state is providing, you know, and you've heard through the years, two-thirds funding, well, that's a misnomer. Our, the percentage of our budget that the state has funded has been decreasing for the last couple of years. It's now, I believe, forty-five, forty-six percent. That's, I don't have it right in front of me. And so that's been decreasing. So as that decreases, that means we need to rely more and more on our local property taxes and our taxpayers to pick up the burden. So, Tim, you're absolutely right. While the sheer numbers don't affect us, the numbers across the state as they increase could have a, you know, an effect, a direct effect on the amount of our property taxes. Thank you.
Mr. Pinion.
I'm like, ah. You have to talk to your legislators about this because it is a problem. And it, I mean, it's nothing we're doing wrong. I mean, the GOP solution to the budget, the Senate solution right now is to expand vouchers. And this is also for systems that are not held accountable to the same standards. Public schools take everybody. We, we have to take everybody. So they take, you know, voucher schools don't have to take the expense of children that, you know, have a lot of needs, a lot of extra needs. So you have to talk to your legislators. I mean, the, we have a pretty good dialogue with the eight folks that, that represent the Stoughton Area School District boundaries, and mostly they're very sympathetic to our issues. But it's in the other districts. I mean, you just, we, they're being talked to by other groups, and it is very maddening because we have no control over it at all. And not to mention, we, I mean, Tim says forty-five percent is what we get from the state. We are relying on referendum dollars. So that is yet another issue that's coming up, that we have legislators that want to restrict the referendum dollars. We were very lucky, not lucky, but we worked really hard to get our community to pass a recurring referendum in two thousand and fourteen because we proved to them that we were good stewards of the resources we had. And now they, is, there's a concerted effort to roll that back after five years, and that would be about a seven million dollar cliff that we would have to deal with. So that is something, you know, we talk about losing sleep at night. This is, that is something that we will lose sleep over if that happens. So these are all things that we really have to engage in.
Sure. Go ahead.
I just want to follow up. So what role and do we play and what's the best way for us to get involved with that? And the mayor may be able to share, you know, what, what our league does for us. So we have to figure out what we're going to do to help you, and I don't know what we're already doing.
Sure. If I could, I wanted to share a little bit about one of the other things that, that the city and the schools share are concerns about resources. I mean, that, that's a common thread that, that we all do. And Donna's exactly right. We need to talk to our state legislators and anyone else that we can grab their ear from. One of the new things in the budget this year, the state budget talks about a repeal of personal property taxes. And on the, on, on one level, that sounds, well, that's okay, you know? Businesses shouldn't have to pay property taxes, right? Personal property taxes. But if we repeal personal property taxes, the city of Stoughton loses four hundred thousand dollars off from our budget immediately. Now, the state's talking about, they will make, they are proposing that they'll make communities whole. But the questions that I have and that other mayors that I work with throughout the League of Municipalities is for how long? You know, because oftentimes that's how changes happen, is that, well, we'll make you whole, right? The others concerned with a repeal of personal property taxes is that it's once again a shift on our homeowners to make up that difference in taxes. Because Superintendent Onsager is right, schools rely on homeowners' personal property, or real estate property to pay those taxes, as do cities. So once again, our homeowners are being taxed, and when we struggle with, how can we bring those young families to town? It's not just the price of the home, it's the taxes they pay on the home. So I sit on the board of the League of Municipalities, which is a group statewide of mayors and administrators, and we are lobbying in the Capitol almost on a, on a daily basis to try to fight against some of those things that don't look good for, for cities. And I know that schools have the same type of, types of lobbyists that work well in the Capitol to, to work for schools. Dane County Cities and Villages is another board that I sit on, and we talk about the same issues and concerns, obviously very similar in Dane County than anywhere else in the state of Wisconsin. So be sure you connect with your legislators, I think, and senators. I think it's unfortunate that we don't yet have a budget. You know, encourage them to, to pass a budget, but to be thoughtful and to consider all the elements of the budget that they are intending to pass.
Well, I, I mean, just if I, if I might add, we, I think there are, I mean, yes, we can all talk to our legislators. I mean, we have an issue because everyone is pretty sympathetic except for the northwest corner or northeast corner of our boundaries, which is Cottage Grove Deerfield area, because that is covered by Senator Fitzgerald and Representative Clayfish, which we know where they stand. But I will say that even though you have lobbyists, we have lobbyists too, and they work really hard for school boards. But I just went to the Capitol a couple of weeks ago and delivered copies of a resolution that the school board passed regarding weapons, and also a letter that Tim wrote, that, like, kind of a, something that we talked about with that referendum restriction thing. And, I mean, they were very happy to talk to us. They really like stories. I know we hear this all the time, but when you have a story, like you just had four hundred K loss if they take that personal property, I wrote that down. If you told that to everybody, they would write that down because they need those little snippets because those are what they share. So right now, I serve as the legislative liaison for the board. I would, I would really recommend that the city council has someone as well that just sort of follows the, the process, that some of the things that really you need to know and act on, I think it can be quite helpful.
Somebody had a hand up.
I, I, go ahead. I mean, I was just going to say, if, you know, we can, we can lobby this legislature till the cows come home, and they're not going to change the direction that we want to go. I mean, until big business quits running this country and this state, we're not going to ever change. So we need to start electing people to office that we can actually have some, some good done for the local communities rather than have big business control our lives. And that's what's happening. It's been happening for years.
Mr. Porisman?
Just for my edification, we have the school board here. So I'd like to just address homeschooling, whether that's having an effect on school enrollment, virtual schools and four K's, which I think are Martin Luther and Pumpkin Patch, is that right?
We have, we have six sites.
The four, the four K even at St. Anne's, Martin Luther and Pumpkin Patch are our students. So our four K program is community-based. So even if they're housed, even though they're housed at those sites, they are our students. And so homeschooling, we do have homeschooling numbers. Now, if, if a student or family homeschools, they are supposed to fill out the paperwork with the state of Wisconsin, but that doesn't always happen. So there could be students in the district that we, that are homeschooled that we do not know of because there's really no check and balance type of thing from, from the DPI. We started virtual learning several years ago. We work with a consortium called, called Jedi, which we offer individual classes virtually along with a full curriculum. You can do full-time virtually. We talk to any student who is open enrolling. When you open enroll out, you have to list the reason why you're opening and rolling out. So especially anybody who lists because they're, they're going to a virtual school, we make a concerted effort to make sure that, that they know we have that option here as well, and we get some back. And when we first started our virtual, working with this consortium, we actually recaptured some of our homeschool numbers because of our virtual options.
And can, and those kids in virtual schools and homeschooling, can they engage in some classes in the high school?
State law allows them to participate if you're homeschooled two classes, I believe, a semester in our, in our cla, in our schools. So if you're homeschooled, you can take up to two classes each semester in our schools.
So ultimately, the, those four things I just talked about really don't have a huge effect on your, on our school system?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on that? Mr. Fry.
Scott, can you just remind me, this is going to come before the board for a discussion as well, right? This open enrollment, in and out? This isn't our only chance to talk about this?
We're, what I need to do is work with school perceptions to do a formal presentation to the board.
Okay. I just, we're going to probably take a deeper dive, but we don't need to do it tonight.
Right. I agree.
Very good.
I agree.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For Dr. Onsager, what do you see, how do you see your operation adjusting if you're going to have a fairly dramatic reduction in, from the eighth grade class going in to the, compared to the twelfth grade class just graduated? I don't see things changing within four years. I'm just curious how you see that working out?
As far as, you know, we definitely are looking, we are definitely facing a economic cliff in, in a couple of years. We've been planning for that. We've been, you know, trying to reduce in different areas that we can. We've also, when we can and we know that there's a reduction coming, sometimes we hire staff for only one year. We put them on a one-year contract because we know that the year after, we're not going to need as much staff. But we also have to make a concerted effort to, you know, whether it's our marketing, whether it's attracting people, et cetera. So it's a twofold. We're, we're preparing as if this is our new norm. We do our budgets. The economic part of our budgets, we're very conservative. So right now, we are doing our budget under the assumption that we are going to get zero dollars increase from the state. So we do a very conservative approach. But we also are having conversations on, as we shrink, how do we meet the needs of the students? How do we prepare them for their future? And are there things that we need to do to revamp to do that? That maybe is more efficient, more effectively, but also still offers them the opportunities that they need. So we have some discussions about career pathways and career academies at the high school. We had conversations of, you know, how do we use technology to our advantage? So one of the things that we are doing this year is every student six twelve will be given a Chromebook this year. And how do we leverage technology as a tool? Technology will never replace a classroom teacher and a quality educator because there's still that relationship, but it is a tool to use to help increase and resources provided to our students. So we're having those conversations, but we're also planning for that fiscal reality as well.
Does that answer your question? Okay. Anybody else? So another issue that we talked about at the last joint meeting was, and we kind of touched on it in some previous discussions, is the increase in economically disadvantaged students within the district. And we wanted to have some discussion about how the city and the district might work together in responding to some of those issues. I'm going to ask Dr. Onsager to talk about what the district is doing with that right now, and then we can talk some more about it.
So as we've said, we've seen an increase in the percentage of our students who qualify for, for free and reduced lunch, considered economically disadvantaged. We've also seen an increase in the number of students who are classified as homeless. Now, our definition of homeless is, it's not that they're on the street, is they may be sharing a home, maybe, maybe, you know, multiple families in, in one dwelling. So we know there's some additional resources our students need. And, and we're responding and this community is responding. We have a group that every year fundraises to help with families and students meal account and their school lunches. The same group also fundraises and gets donations so that our social workers have funds to help students that may need a winter coat, may need shoes, may need other items. We have, you know, this year we have started with the cooperation and spearheaded by our churches and several very dedicated individuals. We have a program where every day there is an opportunity for students to get a bag lunch. Because we know that, you know, thirty percent, roughly thirty percent of our students get a free meal, are on free and reduced lunch during the school year. Well, where are they getting their meals during the summer when school's not in session? So we have all those, you know, we have resources that we are working on. We have summer reading programs for our students because we know one of the barriers for education and some of the barriers for, with economically disadvantaged family is the access to quality reading materials and resources. So we're looking at all that. But we also realize that this just isn't an issue that is affecting our students. It's affecting our families of the students. It's also affecting families and our citizens who may not have students that we don't know about. So one of the things that we are recommending and we are proposing is that, very similar to our strategic planning, if you were part of that process on April eighth, is that we have a community conversation, is we have a community conversation on poverty, on what resources we have. I think we have a lot of different entities that are doing a lot of different things. And Mayor Olson can talk from her standpoint of the different things they're doing, you know? The chief, who was still back there, the chief can talk, you know, on what his department is doing. I think we have a lot of different entities that were doing some great things, but I don't think we've ever taken a systematic and comprehensive approach of what we're doing and what services are we offering and what resources can we offer to our families. And I think that's a community conversation. I think that's a community conversation where we have a group that consists of, of the school district, the city, and other entities, maybe we have representatives from the clergy, et cetera, design, and key stakeholders, design an event where we have a community conversation of what are the resources we need, what are the resources we have, and what are the things we can do. But we have, as far as the school district, we have a poverty task force who is looking at, from a school standpoint, educationally, what do our students need? From their basic needs, what do they need? But we know we have to expand that beyond the school walls and beyond the school day.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
I think that's fabulous. I think it's really good. Because there's times where I would like to do more than what I'm doing, not necessarily as a city council person, but to help, to actually help people more than what I'm doing. So, and I, but I just don't know where to reach and do that, so I think it's great.
Dr. Onsager, maybe you could talk about the meeting you had today, I think you said?
Right. So today Drew Hallwick, who facilitated our strategic planning event, and myself, and Brian Bustler, who's the superintendent of the Oregon- and myself, and Brian Bustler, who's the superintendent of the Oregon School District, met to just kind of talk about different things. And just to see, you know, Oregon has a organization called the Friends of the Oregon School District. And what I discovered is, some of the things that they are doing, or a lot of things they are doing, we have those same programs in place. But it goes back to what I said, they have a comprehensive, or they have one group that you can go to for resources, et cetera. I think that's what we need. I think we need the conversation of what is available. And if we, as a school district, know that there are families who are struggling and need additional, or families need nowhere to go, or we have these conversations as our community evolves. But Drew Hallwick, we're working with Drew to, to help facilitate this conversation. And Drew's done other conversations with other districts, not just school district things, but he's done some community conversations on, you know, what is currently available? What other resources do we need? But part of the conversation is, how do we identify what resources are needed? You know, one of the things, the biggest things that I've heard from numerous groups is transportation. That families, some families struggle with transportation on, how do I get into Madison? If I live in Stoughton and I don't have a car. We're not on the Madison Metro bus line. Are there ways that we can figure that out? I believe McFarland is on the Madison Metro bus line. Is there a way we can shuttle families to McFarland? I don't know. So those are all, I think, among other resources and things like that, that, a community conversation. And the district is willing to be a full partner in this. But I, you know, I think we need an organization that's bigger than us, that's bigger than, than the city, that can kind of do it in umbrella type of thing, that can look at the comprehensive view and work with all the different entities, or all the different entities come together to work on this, this issue.
Mayor Olson?
Thank you. I'm looking at Linda. The conversation that Dr. Onsager is talking about over the last 10 years probably has come together maybe three or four times. And we need to do it again. Because as we know, every time that we get together and talk about what resources does our community have, what resources are needed, and how do you, how do you access those resources? As soon as we put that down on a piece of paper, it's gonna change. And we acknowledge that. So I think the last time we talked, and that is the collaboration of the school, the city, and the churches, we talked about making it, making it digital. But yet, that still has to be updated, right? So as I said, I'm looking at Linda because that's just been a task that she and Hatz, the Housing Action Team in Stoughton, has been charged with putting together. Linda, do you want to share a little bit about what you're doing, please?
There's a group of people that's working on what's called an emergency guide of services. And I sit in on that. But primarily, it's the social workers who are on the front line that know all the ins and outs of this. And they're pretty close to getting the draft of it completed and then getting it out to the community. A person from Cummins is helping with the actual layout of it and the graphic design, so. As far as transportation, there is a group, Stoughton United Ministries, that has an affordable transportation program where we do help people get to Madison. But, you know, it's funding, so we can't, it's not a everyday go into, into Madison. But we do provide trips between Madison and Stoughton for essential appointments, things that are offered in Madison that aren't offered here, so.
Thank you, Linda. So community conversations happen, they just need to continue to happen, right? And continue to be updated. Our case managers at the Senior Center, Start and others, they, each one of them may know a piece of the puzzle. But when you get that group together, it's such a powerful thing to, to watch and to listen to. We're very fortunate with the resources that we have. And the way that they're able to, don't take this the wrong way, but to use those resources to provide the most help that they possibly can. Thank you.
Mr. Swadley?
Thank you. Some of the things that Dr. Onsager just mentioned are in our comprehensive plan that we just approved. And I would encourage the school board members and community members to go through that plan. It's long, it's, there's a nice index in there. So you can go to the page that you need to, to find the information on transportation, for example. One of the things that I want to challenge us as council members is to do a better job going forward than we have done in the past on implementing some of the strategies and goals that are in our comprehensive plan. We've had a transportation ideas in there for 10 years, and we haven't been able to accomplish much of anything with those. So I think it's gonna be up to us to, you know, come up with some strategies in order to, to implement those goals and action items that are in that plan. One of the things I would be looking at from the school district, Dr. Onsager mentioned the families that have to live with other families and how that affects the students. That was one of the arguments, or one of the discussion points that Moving Out was making for a reason that we support the next phase of the Alvinstead project. And I'm wondering if the school district can help us understand that issue a little bit more in the future? And how many students are affected by that? And how potentially a development like that can help these families and them students and the school district as a whole? One other thing I wanted to bring up with the police chief, as long as he's here, is if you can kind of give us an idea of what role and responsibilities have been with the school resource officer? And if you've noticed any trends the last few years? Because we really don't get much communication, and I don't know if the school district does. But certainly, some of the things that we're talking about now, you know, affects the role that that, that's why we put that person in that position to help with these types of issues, whether it's truancy, or it's, you know, could be drug-related issues or safety issues. So I wanted the police chief to have an opportunity to discuss on that a little bit tonight.
Well, I think we're in our third year now of the school resource officer position. And I think it's been doing exactly what we wanted it to do from its intended purpose, is to provide that liaison between the city, the police department, and the school district to help augment the programs and issues that are happening in the schools and then also happening in the community, which, you know, ultimately flow back and forth. The district, I think, has been pretty pleased with the performance that the SROs are providing. They're working steadily on, you know, safety issues and been instrumental and especially in, in the school districts, safety initiative, including some of the, the programs they've implemented over the last couple of years. They've also handled numerous incidents in the schools that don't involve the courts. I mean, it's, it's a way for the, the officer to get involved in, in issues that are happening in the school that help defer things from getting into the court system. It's not about writing citations and tickets and so forth. They do a lot of community-based action right into the schools. And I think that the program has done everything that we hoped it would do over the last three years. And we continue to seek improvements and work closely with the school district. During the school year, the resource officer actually reports to one of the school officials for daily operations and so forth. And then is responding to, to all of the various school buildings.
Is there any questions for the chief since we've got him here?
Now's your chance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Greg, how many SROs have there been?
We're on our second one right now. First one served two years, and I think Todd is in his, going into his second year.
Right.
Other questions on that?
Chief, when I did the Citizens Police Academy thing, one of the things you mentioned was that, at that time, the SRO was one of your busiest officers. Does that continue to be the case? Is it?
Yes, it has. It continues to be a very demanding role. I mean, there's a lot of activity. It's the biggest concentration of citizens in one confined area during the school year in the entire city. So it, it would just be a natural occurrence for that position to be very busy. We have not seen a slowdown. In fact, of the more things that the SRO gets involved with as far as outreach with the youth, the busier they get. I think that's also why it's probably a good idea to, you know, rotate that position every few years because it, it tends to be extremely busy. They, they, they have the most of the work of anybody else in the department on a consistent basis.
Is it busy all negative, or is it because you're doing positive?
No, no, yeah, it's actually very positive of a lot of stuff that they're doing. You know, especially their approach. I mean, they're, they're spending time, they're going to the elementary schools and talking with the students, participating in recesses and, and things like that so that the, the younger kids are getting used to having that officer there. One of the things that we kind of tweaked a little bit last year was to have the, they've been using kind of what we refer to as professional casual dress, with usually a polo shirt and something like that. One of the things that we've encouraged is more of the uniform presence so that, you know, the, the kids get used to seeing that officer there and they become part of the, of the structure of the school and not a, not seen as a negative. And I think that that's been very beneficial as well. And, and I think it's just, it's a good deterrent as well for activities that may be occurring. Again, when you have that high of a concentration of people in one area, there's bound to be conflicts. And, and I think having that presence allows a lot of that to be tempered down before it gets out of hand, knowing that there is an officer present and, and right there, so.
If the chief hadn't said that they are the, you know, one of the busiest, then I would be concerned. And, and we've been very fortunate with, with our SROs because the two of them we had have taken the same approach. They don't sit in their office. They don't sit in their office and wait for things or people to come to them. They're out and about, they're making the relationships, they're making the positive relationships. They're building that network of people. They're getting the students and the staff comfortable with talking to them. And a lot of times, and most of the conversations, aren't anything to do with law enforcement or anything. It's just that casual conversation type of thing. So they are, you know, Todd, right now, this last year, was, was in every school. And he's constantly, he's a constant presence. So you don't find him in his office unless he's working directly with a student right there. You see him out and about, you see him in the lunchroom, you see him in the hallways, you see him at all the different elementary schools. So that's part of, that's part of the job. That's part of the responsibility is that out and about, that presence, that relationship building, that proactive approach.
And we're very fortunate, especially with Todd Davici, the current SRO, is that he has a background in, in special ed education. I mean, so he was a great fit. And, you know, and part of that liaison is not just with the students, but it's that comfort level with the staff members as well. So that they, they build that trusting relationship between them and then they can carry on those conversations that you weren't having before without having somebody as far as from a law enforcement perspective. It's all the, the information exchange, which is invaluable. I mean, where you can get a inkling of something happening and quell it before it does happen in a lot of cases. And that information exchange comes from students and staff and, and that, you know, that, that working relationship that they develop and the, and the relationships that the officer builds with the students. It's in, you know, to me, it's one of the best programs from a law enforcement standpoint that we have for being preventative in nature and being able to provide some proactive activities where a lot of times, and especially with, you know, call volumes and staffing levels, it's, you know, we tend to be mostly reactive. And, and that's a real positive that we can go into the school and, and take a proactive approach to things instead of having to react to everything, so.
Mr. Swadley?
So just a quick follow-up. If we had unlimited resources, how many school resource officers would you like to have?
I'm sure we could use at least two. It would be nice, they do get, he gets stretched very thin. I mean, and that's been something that's very consistent. And it would be nice, it's, you know, you know, to me, one of the most pivotal schools for a resource officer to be in is the middle school. That's that real transitional age for kids. And I think they really need that strong role model presence in there. And it's just unfortunate they can't spend more time in, in the middle school, let alone the elementary levels. It just, as we would expect, that a lot of time is spent at the high school just because of the dynamics of the, the age group that's there. And so, yeah, at least two. Two would be very beneficial, I would think.
And then just finally, I believe that you've been doing some lobbying at the state level on some things. Is there an update where you might?
Well, I, you know, I echo a lot of the other concerns. I act as the co-chair of the Wisconsin Chiefs of Police Association Legislative Committee and which entails doing a lot of lobbying on behalf of the Wisconsin Chiefs and law enforcement in general. And there, as you, you know, you all read, there's a lot of issues that affect law enforcement that are being discussed from, you know, changes in training and standards requirements and, and training issues and laws that are passed and how they affect law enforcement in general. It, it's been a very busy-ing time. I've been doing this now for, this is the third year that I've been the, the co-chair of our legislative committee. And to tell you how busy it is, that's why we have two, because we need to have two. We also have a hired lobbyist that we use and that monitors stuff at the Capitol. But it's an extremely challenging time, especially on the state level because there are so many things that the legislature does that affects law enforcement in particular and communities in general that if we don't have a voice there to express how we think, you know, a proposed legislation could affect what we do and how our communities are, to me, it's an indispensable tool to have, is to be able to do that. We're not always successful, no lobbying is. But we try to work with, you know, both sides of the aisle and ensure that, you know, the citizens of Wisconsin are well-represented from a law enforcement standpoint, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything, yes, Mr. Borisma?
Just one more issue. I'm not on the school board, but I'll sound like I am. But we, we've been having some discussions, actually on some committees. And we have, we've had discussions about the number of scholarships that the city of Stoughton gives. We're not a really, really rich community. But if you really want your kid to go on to an institution of higher learning after high school, you better live in Stoughton because we give so many scholarships, it's incredible. And that's one of those marketing things, too. I mean, you know, that's, my kids got scholarships and that, that got them into schools. And, and we have so many scholarships that are available for people. I'm not sure that people know that, but I just wanted to let that, let everybody know, so.
Yeah, it was close to a quarter million dollars this, this year.
Page six of the back-to-school issue?
Proudly stated by Dr. Onsager, thank you.
So the next up is discussion and action regarding the formation of an ad hoc committee. In speaking with Mr. Swadley, what, what we're contemplating is that there would be a subgroup of this group. In other words, two or three, I think three is a good number, from both the city council and from the school board, who would meet with some goals set in mind and report back to this group periodically. I know I've got two school board members at least who have agreed that they'd like to serve on such a committee. I'm looking for a third person. I don't know how you're doing with volunteers.
Who do you have? We'll start with you.
You got a volunteer right there.
Oh, great, okay, then we got three. Mr. Booban, Mr. Fry, and Mr. Coughlin.
Okay, and I've had a couple people that have said that they'd be willing to do it. Who wants to work with these guys on this? I know Alder Jensen said that he would be interested. Borisma looks interested, Engelberger looks interested. Anybody else, or should we go with them three? I think we have. You might be? Well, anybody can sit in on those as well, I would think. But the idea is to have three people if your schedules agree, which is a challenge. And we, we found that out tonight.
Yeah, and I think that's the idea, is that to get this group together, even on a quarterly basis, is challenging enough. To have a group that's just six- To have a group that's just six people, that might be a little bit more doable. So I think what we were contemplating doing tonight is setting this group with some tasks to come back to the joint city council, school board. I know that, at least at the school board level, what we've talked about is having this group deal with marketing, the Stoughton area community, and also talk about policies or, you know, whatever seems to be the right way of doing it to encourage the development of more single-family housing. It seems like those two things are relatively closely related from what I've been hearing of the discussion, of the discussion tonight. So I guess I would just throw it out to these two committees that are here tonight. What do you think of all that? I think we probably would need a formal motion in order to proceed. Well, let's hear what the motion is exactly.
Motion would be to create a sub-ad hoc committee of school, school district and council consisting of three of each to meet.
Okay.
At the convenience of that group.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
That was Mr. Engelberger? Thank you. So, discussion on that. Mr. Burisma.
I'm going to defer, I'm going to defer my big part of that committee to my colleague here, because I think she could do an excellent job with her ideas. She wants to be on that committee. I would say do a whole.
Okay, thank you again. Did I, did I? Okay, thank you.
So, I guess the next question is, what do these two boards, council, what do they want this group to do? And when would we like them to come back to us with a report?
Well, I guess some of the items I think we discussed tonight, you just mentioned, the marketing, the single-family homes. We could talk about public safety issues. Certainly, there's been a lot of discussion, you know, not only in Stoughton, Dane County, but in the country about, you know, the opioid, you know, the use of drugs. That certainly could be a potential item to talk about. I don't want to throw too many things at the group at once. I want them to be able to, you know, have a few things to work on. Is there waiting for information? Maybe they can work on the next one. Try to prioritize things based on the discussions. And that's kind of how we got here, is based on the feedback that we received at the council members. We thought that this would be a good idea to have this ad hoc committee on these issues. I think the school district had the same type of discussions. So I think I would try to limit it to maybe three or four items. This group collectively can work them out. I'm hoping that the mayor and/or the superintendent can sit in on the meetings if their schedules allow. And then maybe have somebody kind of be, I don't know if I would call it the leader or the spokesperson for that group. Maybe have one leader for everything, maybe have one for each of the topics, whatever they decide. And, you know, just communicate with us what's going on. In the process of communication, just keep in mind, you know, the open meetings, the laws, so people aren't trying to have a conversation about that on email, that you're just sending it out as information only. Or you could send it out through the district or through city hall if that makes more sense. So we don't endanger ourselves with that. But otherwise, I'd leave it up to the group to, you know, put together a plan and, and let us know, you know, what they think.
Could I suggest that city council president and school board president each appoint a co-chair? I think that might work best, because then we've got a chair that's reporting back to each of their home groups, if you will.
Sure.
That make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd look for a volunteer from, you want to do it? Awesome, thank you very much.
And I'll appoint you, John, because you did volunteer, actually.
Okay, cool.
Thanks for doing that.
Lobbyed, actually.
Just a comment about the drug use suggestion. I mean, we do have a Stoughton Wellness Coalition that is made up of school district personnel, city personnel, I mean, hospital, everybody. And it seems like it would be more efficient to actually have them just present to the joint meeting than to have the committee actually be spending time on that when they could be working on other things.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because they have done a lot of work on that set of issues already, and it wouldn't make sense to go over the same ground again. Mr. Burisma.
And I would add, I would add that the HAZ committee is a really active group, too, and they, they could have some direct input into that, too. The HAZ is the housing team for Stoughton, dealing with both housing that's needed in Stoughton, but also for people who are doubling up, as Tim was talking about, or homeless. I think, though, that group should be part of, at least someplace where you reach out to.
So I have, I have some questions right off the bat. You mentioned being careful on making sure that we're not violating any meetings laws in discussion through email and stuff. How freely then will we be able to pull in information from outside organizations in between meetings of this subcommittee?
Sure. Gathering information doesn't really invoke the open meetings rule.
Okay.
It's only communicating with each other that can implicate the open meetings rules. So if you're just sending information to each other but not discussing it, that isn't a problem. But Mr. Swadley's right, this group has to operate under the open meetings law. Set your meetings on a regular basis, they have to be noticed, and we can do that through both city hall and the district office.
Okay.
And, you know, if you've got specific questions on how to do things, I can certainly help you out with that.
So, for example, our city attorney has advised us, anytime four of us are having a communication at the same time, that could constitute a quorum, because if we were to vote on an issue, it could defeat it. On a committee, it's even less.
Right.
So if you're just sending out information, you're okay, but soon as you start replying, forwarding emails or replying all, that's where it gets a little bit sticky. So that's why I put that out there at the front end. But if you're just putting out information, as Mr. Dirks has said, that's okay. And certainly gathering information from other organizations is, you know, I would encourage that.
Okay.
Could I just throw out as a suggestion for this group, then, that the ad hoc committee report back on whatever progress they've made within 60 days? Does that sound reasonable to folks?
Yep.
We don't want it to wander off too far, but since you're just getting started, 60 days sound reasonable to everyone?
Yeah, and I would suggest the two co-chairs maybe try to get together at some point and, you know, set up a meeting date or send out, you know, save a date to those that are on those groups and, and see, you know, if you can get started as soon as it's convenient.
Yes.
And the only restriction is, for myself, is that I would need to have it in the evening. Daytime's going to be really, really hard.
I think probably just about everybody works during the day, so, yeah. Mr. Frye.
John, are you interested in having attracting young families as a focus of this group specifically? Or is that covered under marketing and do it at that?
I, personally, I'd be really interested in having that as a focus of this group. I think if, if we stated that as, as one of our priorities, I think that as a message, or that would be a strong message to our community from both the city council and the school board in recognizing that our declining enrollment is in some way tied to not having enough young families moving into our community. And so I, I think if that's a message that we can send to the community off the bat, it'll at least move our discussion in a, in a positive direction in terms of being able to research attracting young families through this committee.
Do we need to vote on these priorities, or do we need to indicate that?
Well, as I'm hearing it, the two specific tasks that we're giving this committee right now are on developing a marketing plan for the Stoughton community and working on encouraging the development of single-family housing. I think the public safety issue, as Donna said, the Wellness Coalition's been working on that. Does that satisfy you?
It certainly does.
Okay. And I think that those two things, that's probably enough to work on starting out.
Yeah.
Ms. Fitzgibbon.
I have a question, since, since one of the priorities is marketing. Wouldn't it be good to have either invited or as a member of that committee, someone from the Chamber of Commerce?
I think that that would be well, certainly.
Yeah, I, I think one of the first things that we would want to do when we meet is make a list of organizations or community members who could help be leaders in figuring out how to market Stoughton and how to get the community on board with development of single-family homes. So, yeah, I think one of our priorities immediately, I would assume, would be having a list of people to reach out to. So if you, if anybody has ideas or people they'd like to forward us, please.
Okay. Other questions on that? All right, there's been a motion, there's been a second, we've had discussion. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
I just have a procedural question for the mayor. Would this be a recommendation to the council, or do we have the authority to just make that here at the committee of the whole?
Committee of the whole regarding city structure doesn't have the authority to make that type of a motion. You could make a recommendation to council and it could be put on your agenda for next Tuesday night.
Okay, thank you.
So this committee is then making a recommendation to the city council, and the school board is sitting as the school board. We did not notice this, that we would take any formal action tonight, so we can't, I guess, take a vote on what the school board's position is, but I'll make sure it's on Monday's agenda.
Okay. So as, as the council members, we can make that recommendation tonight and vote on it, and then you'll have the school district do that at your next meeting?
Right, we'll give it our official action as soon as possible.
All right, that sounds great.
Before you move too far, I think we, we sort of bypassed Yoel Abeth's great idea of inviting someone from the chamber to join the committee, not simply as a resource, but as a member of the committee, I think makes great idea.
Sure. I guess what I would ask, then, is that this group at least go on the record as whether, as to whether or not it supports the creation of this committee. And we can, since we've got two groups here together with different procedures as to how they do things, we'll basically be deferring formal action to separate meetings of our separate groups. So, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that is recommended, then, to our various groups. The last thing we had on the agenda before future possible agenda items is an update on the Building Bridges Mental Health Crisis Team, and I'll ask Dr. Onsager to just give us a little information on that.
So we're pleased to announce that we are partnering with Dane County. And we're each picking up half the cost of hiring two mental health experts who will be working full-time in the schools starting this fall. And in fact, the, the interview process starts Monday. Kelly Melcher from the, the school district, who's our director of pupil services, along with somebody from the county, is interviewing people on Monday to try to find two people who will be stationed in, in the school district. Like I said, they will be working with students from, in our 4K program, all the way up to eighth grade. And this is on trauma and mental health, being proactive, but also providing wraparound services, helping the students not only in school, but also helping families and providing resources to our families to wrap it around. And they've had great successes with other school districts. And, you know, I, I give kudos to Joe Perizzi, Dane County exec Joe Perizzi, for this, this was one of his major initiatives. And so it's additional resources for our students and their families that are experiencing some mental health issues and some trauma, et cetera. And exec Joe Perizzi will be joining the school board at our first meeting in August to present information on this and to kind of formally kick off our partnership.
Questions?
Thank you. Congratulations, thank you. Mayor, thank you for your part in this as well.
Absolutely.
Trying to understand kind of the, the chain of command or the flow structure on how this will work, because it's a fairly new concept for me. I saw the press release. So the, the people that are coming into our schools, who do they report to?
They report to, they will report to Kelly, our director of pupil services, will be kind of the liaison, kind of the report person in the school district. But there's also somebody from the county who is also, so they're working jointly. They are actually employed by, they're contracted through Catholic Charities is the financial, the organization that they actually work for, who's taking their liability and they pay their insurance, et cetera. But as far as who they report to in the school district, it will be our director of pupil services who will be coordinating that, who will be working with this program closely.
Okay. And so what will the relationship be, if any, with maybe some of the other departments in the school district and, you know, the counselors, the principals, the school resource officer?
Right. They are all, they are all part of the referral process. They are all part of the, the chain to refer students into this program so they can offer them services. And then from there, once the student is in the program, these two individuals will then take over to do some direct counseling, to do some counseling, will be meeting with the families in the homes, et cetera. So all of those personnel are a, they recommend, they are also a resource to, if there's other supports that's needed, so they're working very closely with these two individuals.
Okay. Because I think it's going to be important, important for parents to understand how this is going to work.
Yep.
I know it's early in the process. I imagine you have a communication strategy or plan to put out there, and I would ask, maybe you could share that with us when you get to that point.
And then any, any student that is, been identified, one of the first conversations is with the family and with the parents, of fully explaining the program, fully explaining what the resources are and working, and they enter into that relationship.
Are there other questions about that? Okay, great, thank you very much, Dr. Onsager. So, as I said, speaking with Mr. Swadley, we're going to try to meet jointly about every three months or so. I don't think we can really do it any more frequently than that. I don't think we'd really want to meet any less than that if we can manage it. So if anybody tonight has some possible future agenda items, why don't you let us know what those are? Otherwise, bring them up with me if you're on the school board, or Mr. Swadley if you're on city council, and we'll try to get a date and an agenda set within the next few weeks.
Yeah, certainly a date because we know it's busy times. For us, we're entering into our budget cycle. It won't be long, the school district will be starting the school year, so, you know, we'll try to get that out there as far as ahead of time so people can plan for it. And, you know, those that volunteered to be on the ad hoc group, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
So, any takers? No? Okay. Well, with that, then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Who is that? Oh, Mr. Frye.
Guy, that was his.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Take your pick. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.